Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting. Today is Monday, September 8th. We're coming to you from the Bennington Fire Facility, the multipurpose room of the Benning-- on the third floor at 130 River Street in Bennington. My name is Tom Haley. I have the honor of chairing this board, and I will ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Nancy.
Hi, I'm Nancy White. Good evening, Sarah Perrin. It's good to see so many familiar faces here. Thanks for coming.
Hi, Jim Sullivan.
Good evening, I'm Jackie Matts.
Good evening, my name is Clark Adams.
And I'm Ed Woods.
Also with us, we have Dan Monks, acting town manager. We have Nancy Lively, who is preparing, as always, to take excellent minutes. We have Josh Boucher, making sure everything's coming to us out in TV land. And we have-- Jonah, are you doing something this evening? Jonas Spivak, who is our communications coordinator, who will handle all of the audiovisual for us this evening. We'll start tonight, like we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ed, would you mind?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just as for all.
And Jackie, would you mind sharing our vision statement this evening?
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, which consists of the minutes of August 21st and 25th.
If I may, I have to abstain from the minutes portion of that, so I think we need to take it apart, but I also have questions on the minutes.
Themselves.
A couple of things that I need clarified.
Okay.
So I think we need to take it apart.
Okay, no problem. Well, we can take-- let's take the minutes of October-- I'm sorry, August 21st. Is that one-- do you have questions on that one, Ed?
I do, and I think that this is probably a simple question that Clark can answer. Line 103, "Mr. Adams, we're putting together an ad hoc task force with people from various entities to guide us to do the issues mentioned," and I'm not familiar with that additional task force, so I wondered if somebody could fill me in. Maybe Clark, maybe somebody else.
Sure. There's been, as everyone knows, many discussions about everything from housing to economic development around the town. And what we've done, with the process of formulating formally, is called in people from BRCRC, a subquorum, elements of the Select Board here, with the idea of even involving subject matter experts, experts whether it be developers, financiers, whatever, about what we, as a town, can do to establish forward movement in terms of all of these issues, the housing and economic development of the town. As you may be aware, for some reason, economic development disappeared from our Town Department listing, so we're hoping to revitalize that. And as you know, there's a lot of talk about housing, and we're trying to find a way to stimulate housing growth in this town.
Can you tell me who the town representatives are on that?
Well, Dan Monks has been meeting with us, and on occasion Shannon has joined us.
Who's the "us"? That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, I'll talk in terms of the board would be Jim Sullivan, myself, and Jackie here have met. And, you know, this was discussed with both Tom and Dan, I don't know, about two months ago, when we had some of these issues brought up. I suggested we get together and put together a structure to address these concerns.
Glad that we're doing it. I have the concern that I sit on another group in a different part of town covering the same issue. So some of us have talked before about channeling our resources, and I am just interested that we do that.
Right, right.
Point of order, we're simply going over to approve the minutes at this point.
You're right, thanks.
Great.
So I'll have questions about that. We're on the 21st, that's all.
Nancy? Anything else?
No.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything on the minutes of August 21st? Okay, and then we'll-- now we'll go to the minutes of August 25th. Does anyone have any comments on those or questions?
I think this is just a question, and it's probably-- it probably should be filed under upcoming agendas, but there are two items here that were slated for tonight that are not on the agenda, so I just want to remind us that we talked about those and that they didn't make it.
What?
303 Energy Committee and 306 Cornerstone Housing look like they were both going to be here on September 8th, and they're not. And I know, as someone who has sat in on agenda setting for the last year, that they don't always follow the way you intend.
Right.
But I don't want to lose track with them.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Nancy?
I thought the rest of the board didn't feel the Energy Committee needed to come back in. I'm the one that should have been quoted as saying, "We need to all get on the same page."
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. Well, let's vote on the minutes because we have the same board member absent on those. So all those in favor of accepting the minutes of August 21st and 25th as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Excuse me. No one made a motion.
Oh, you're right. Thanks, Nancy. That's why we have you here. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes, please?
Motion to accept.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Now, could I please have all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention.
One abstention.
All right. Now, we'll take the warrants and licenses. Any questions on the warrants and licenses?
I'd move to accept the warrants and licenses for the purposes of discussion.
I'll second that with discussion to follow.
And Clark, did you have something?
Oh, I have a second. That are renewals. Do we know when they are due to expire?
They have expired.
And do we know when?
I know that as early as Friday, they were expired, last Friday.
So they're way-- they're past expiration. My concern is, and I think I've asked this before, this is not the last stop in a renewal. Am I correct?
Well, it goes to the clerk and then up to the state, yes.
And that means that this establishment is sitting with an expired permit until it comes back. Am I right about that, Dan?
Yeah, and I don't know how quick that turnaround is. It may be fairly quick, but I'm not certain.
Generally, it takes-- it could take as little as part of a day. Once Cassie gets it back from us, she sends it to the state, and the turnaround can be pretty quick.
Just this-- another time to remind people to watch those dates because we're talking about an expired permit for a going concern in Bennington that is obviously not going right now.
And that was closed all weekend.
Yes.
Which is not good for them.
Question.
Yep.
Dan, didn't you say in the past that the town puts out reminders?
I don't know. I just-- I do know that all liquor license holders know-- should know when their licenses terminate. Cassie, I believe, in the past, has told me that she sends out reminders, but I can't confirm that.
Okay, I thought somebody did say that the town does send everybody with a license ahead of time to remind them.
I believe they now expire all at about the same time, so it's easy to remind.
And they do get reminders from the state.
Yeah.
Okay, so somebody is reminding groups ahead of-- okay.
And they need to read their email.
And they probably have a placard on their wall that has a date on it.
Mm-hmm.
They're required to, I believe.
That was sarcastic, my comment.
I think it pairs reminding folks that that shouldn't happen. Clark?
What date did their license expire?
We don't know.
We don't, sir.
We don't have that.
Is there someone who can find out? Or who can I ask to find out?
The town clerk's office would know.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right. All in favor of accepting the warrants and licenses, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. All right, on to what looks to be a very busy public comment section this evening. I will-- where are my notes? Remind everyone that public comment is a period of time where people can present information that is not related to something on the agenda that is for the public good. It allows you to share information and make announcements to the benefit of the community at large. Please do keep your comments to three minutes or less. Speakers should restate their legal name and town of residence. Sharing comments, announcements, and concerns are encouraged. Rather than asking questions, it's not a time for discussion. If you do have specific questions, it's best to contact the manager's office for a full explanation and accurate information. If a topic discovers much discussion, the item will be considered for an agenda item at a future meeting. Once your comment is finished, unless a board member has clarifying questions, you should please take your seat, and if there are clarifying comments or statements that we can make, we will do so at the end of the public comment period. So let's see. Let's start with Jim Carroll on the Ninja Trail.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Carroll. I'm from Bennington. There were a couple of concerns that were relayed to me on two separate dates. One at Garlic Fest about encampments on the Ninja Trail, and I called Stu, the town Dan, to let him know about that, and Dan informed me, and I asked Dan to let us know tonight. The second concern that I was notified was an encampment on the banks of the Walooosa behind St. Francis and bordering River Street. There were open flames and a number of individuals who were encamped there. And Dan, if you can provide an answer for me.
So Tom, do you want me to wait till the end of public comment?
Yeah, we'll do all the answers at the end, Dan. Thank you. Shirley Adams, 9/11 remembrance and reorg.
Shirley Adams, Bennington. I would just like to bring to attention a couple of events that will be happening shortly. The first, there will be a 9/11 commemorative remembrance ceremony on Thursday, which is the 24th year anniversary of the 9/11 event. It is sponsored by Walmart. It will be in the Walmart parking lot. It's an early ceremony, so set your alarms. We're asking you to be there by 7:50 in the morning because the ceremony's going to start at 8:00. There will be speakers and perhaps some light refreshments. The second event that's happening, and this may be a surprise to some, there is an active Republican Committee in Bennington. And like all political committees, this is a year we reorganize, so I'm here to inform the public and invite you to the Republican Committee Caucus. It will be held on September 16th at the Harvest House at 6:30. All are invited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kate Cost, CPARB, and Act 56.
Kate Cost, Bennington, Chair CPARB. I just have an update on-- for the rescheduling of our presentation on Act 56. We've rescheduled the presentation by Mr. Christopher Bacall. He's the executive director of the Vermont Police Academy. For our regular scheduled meeting on Thursday, October 23rd, we've moved it from 6:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Given that Mr. Bacall has quite a distance to travel, this allows him to leave and get home before it's totally dark outside. Please recall that Act 56 concerns the professional regulation of law enforcement and oversight by the Vermont Criminal Justice Council and has been in effect since July 1st, 2018. Given the recent vote on the Town Charter Amendment regarding oversight by CPARB and police oversight, this presentation will provide the community with information about what's currently in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it George Schmidt? PFOA?
My name is George Latimer Schmidt, 510 Southshire Drive. My wife, Cindy Thompson, both reside there. I did not realize this is item six on the agenda, but just a real quick review. We determined that our wells had PFOA about three or four years ago, and we were getting treatment. Several of our neighbors have had to get treatment, apparently airborne, to wells. I know the towns engineer has come up with a solution to extend the water line on Southshire and also on Hickory Hill and other, you know, other locations that have the high level. We just would like to reiterate our interest in that happening. It's a health issue for us, potentially, if the treatment option fails or intermittently goes bad. And also, I want to say that it's a housing and land use issue because the lots in that area that are vacant are not going to be developed unless they get town water. I don't think there's too many builders that will go in and drill wells on the speculation that it's going to be clean water. So I just want to thank the board for putting this on the agenda. Jim Sullivan met with us and was very helpful the other day, so I'll stay for item six. So, thank you.
Thanks very much. And next up, we have some familiar faces. Do you guys care what order we call you in?
Well--
All right. You can off the--
So, we are gathered here tonight as former Select Board members who, while on the board, were part of the process to get the Ben High project across the finish line. We are not here to pat ourselves on the back, but to publicly thank Zach Hale for his courage and determination to give Bennington and its residents this tremendous and transformative gift. Members of the current Select Board were also part of this journey, and I know the majority of them are filled with gratitude also. At every meeting Zach attended, he was calm, prepared, patient, and proved repeatedly he knows how to use Excel like nobody's business. He never seemed flustered and answered every question to the best of his ability. It was inspiring to watch. The ribbon cutting will happen, and we will be there, but we felt we could not wait that long to express our appreciation for what Zach and his entire team has accomplished. Deserving people will have a place to live. Children will have access to high-quality daycare. Seniors will have a better and bigger space, and the rec center will have additional square footage to hold classes. All of this and more will contribute to making Bennington a better place to live for everyone. This prominent building on Main Street was an eyesore. It is now being-- so thank you, Zach. It was an honor to be a part of this project. You are a true champion for Bennington and my personal hero. Congratulations on a job well done.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Jenkins, former Select Board member, and I wanted to add my public thank you to Zach Hale as well. I appreciate Jeanne Connor pulling us together to be here tonight. Zach Hale's commitment to this community is extraordinary. He did the rare thing of putting his reputation and his livelihood on the line to do something transformative for this community. Even more amazing to me is that he held to his principles and made this project as energy-efficient as it could possibly be and as beautiful as it could be. That has meant extra upfront costs to him, but it enhances Bennington, and it will save money in the long run, and it protects the environment. I told Zach a few weeks ago that July 30th, the day the final paperwork was signed, would always be Zach Hale Day for me. Of course, he didn't do it alone. The town, including Town Manager Stu Hurd, Acting Manager Dan Monks, and Community Development Director Shannon Bersati, were there to do what they could every single day. But it took Zach Hale, a person with the integrity and enough of the dog-with-a-bone attitude, to see this project through. Zach, my heartfelt thanks to you for this incredible gift to Bennington. Thank you.
Bruce Lee Clark, Bennington. One of the great joys of being a retired teacher is the opportunity to observe a former student using many of the skills that he exhibited while in the classroom and beyond. Dedication, resilience, analysis, and insight, as well as honesty, were evident in Zach's work with his colleagues in the pre-law classroom at the CDC, now Southwest Tech. While it would be tempting to take even some small credit for Zach's success, I know that he had these gifts and skills in him all the while. Congratulations to him and to the town of Bennington for helping raise him on these first steps, and I look forward to the ribbon cutting in the near future. Thank you, Zach.
Jim Carroll, Bennington. You know, I watched, along with other board members, Zach's approach to this project, and from the beginning, man, he was a standout. He was methodical, he was cool, he was collected, and whenever he came before the town, he had an answer. He was prepared, it was precise, and damn, we're lucky to have him. And I want to close by congratulating Zach, and I think we're going to see a lot of-- a lot more good come out of Zach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, everybody. It was good to see you all here again. Does anyone wish to speak that did not have a chance to sign up prior to the meeting? All right, thank you.
Tom, would you like me to respond to Mr. Carroll's?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead? That's the only thing I had notes that-- sure.
So I'll respond to the fires on the-- behind St. Francis. I guess I would just ask that folks, when this is happening, to just call the police department so they can address it. If there are fires occurring, that is not appropriate, and they would need a-- they would need a permit, which they would not be allowed to get in that area, so our police department can respond to that and deal with that issue. As far as the encampments, folks living behind the Walmart property, the code enforcement department has been in contact with the Walmart and Walmart folks, as well as the property owner. Both those entities made a decision to remove those encampments, but working with the PD and some nonprofits and other agencies in the community, the PD led an outreach to those folks ahead of Walmart and the property owner moving on that property, offered services and information about how they could get help, and also notified them that they would-- that Walmart and the property owner were going to move in to clean up-- clean up their property, as is their right. I think it was very effective. I believe most people moved out voluntarily ahead of the cleanup, which I understand is either has occurred or is about to occur. And again, it's private property, it's not public property. Walmart and the property owner have every right to clean that property out, but I do believe our police department, working with our community partners, showed an inappropriate and compassionate response to that issue. Doesn't solve that issue. Those folks are probably going to go someplace else, but at least they were offered some help and advice on how to navigate that change, so I'm proud that our police department led that effort. So that's all I have on that.
All right, thanks very much. All right, next up, we have a Department of Public Works update with Jonas Spivak and DPW personnel.
Hi, thank you for that. My name is Jonas Spivak, and I'm the Communications Coordinator for the town of Bennington. I am not the expert on the DPW, so this is more of a lightish overview of some of the projects that the town DPW has been doing. And DPW is short for the Department of Public Works, and that actually encompasses a number of different departments, and we'll be talking a little bit about that today. But I do want to mention that we just had Larry Gates, our Assistant Director of Public Works here, about six or seven weeks ago, giving us a really nice in-depth talk about some of the features of the sewer and water departments. Likewise, our Director RJ will be here in January for a multi-hour discussion of DPW as they go through the budget process. So again, today's not supposed to be a deep dive with the experts here, but if you do have questions for those experts, they are certainly available, and they come before this body and this community over the course of the year to give you that sort of deep level of information. But what we do recognize is that a lot of the work they do is not necessarily obvious, so it is important to remind ourselves of the different things that they do do. And I wanted to start by mentioning that if you in the community see something that needs to be fixed, how do you reach out to the Department of Public Works? On our website, we have a fix-it form, and there's usually a link right on the homepage. It's there currently. Sometimes it gets bumped off for other more timely things, but it's always under the community section and under the section, "How do I get something fixed?" So look for that in that menu navigation if you have something that you see in your neighborhood that you'd like to see addressed. On the right of this image, you can see this is our crew. This is during the winter time, so some of those down months when there's less to do, they're never-- they're never idle. So here, they're working on forms that they've created, and they're pouring concrete into them, building things like catch basins, tree boxes, and risers that will be used during the construction months. So never a dull moment around the Department of Public Works. We are fortunate to have a very highly trained workforce doing the work around town, and the key to that is they share skills between the different folks. In addition to going out and getting trainings, they bring that back to the group as a whole, they share those trainings, so there's redundancy. If someone is sick or unavailable, you don't lose a day of work because you don't have an operator to run a certain type of equipment, for example. They also really like doing as much as possible in-house, and that's primarily because it's a cost saver. And I got to tell you, our Public Works crew, they are frugal. I wanted to say Yankee frugality, and I guess I'll save that for the next slide. But they're also using things like our own in-house striping machine. I'm kind of blocking the side here with that, so we're doing that in-house. Likewise, with the paver machine. These are all things that we used to have to job out, and we now do in-house. And I got to say, some of the areas that these-- of work that these folks do are incredibly technical, especially when we're talking about our Water Department and Waste Water Department. Many of those require many levels of certification, up to five, which many of which take years to attain and very difficult testing in between. So we're talking highly skilled workers in addition to being versatile. So there it is. I couldn't fit Yankee frugality on there, but I wanted to because it seems sometimes like it's in the DNA of a lot of our workers. But saving money is really key, and a lot of times they're doing it by being innovative and taking advantage of new technologies. For example, on the left, that's a picture of the inside of a sewer main. For example, on the left, that's a picture of the inside of a sewer main that has been slip-lined on Depot Street. In fact, we slip-lined 1,200 feet of sewer mains, including a part that went under the Woomsack River. This was not cheap, the project cost us about $80,000, but that's compared to the cost of about $1 million if we had to dig it up and do a trenching thing and all the traditional things you'd have to do to replace a sewer main. And in fact, I have a sample here, a little show and tell for you. So what the Select Board is looking at is a piece of slip lining material that's going inside some of our older sewer pipes, including ones made of clay, which are simply aging out. Much of our sewer system and water system is over 100 years old, so making sure that we're taking care of that system is absolutely key. And this material that they're looking at is actually really good, up to pipes as small as about six inches. It doesn't really make sense on six inches or smaller because of the thickness of the slip lining itself. In the middle and right, you can see examples of us using what's called a structural sealant. And this one in particular, that's being used in a manhole in Old Bennington, and in some cases such as this, using this to remediate a manhole is extremely cost-effective because just to do this one manhole could have cost $7,000 or $8,000. Instead, it just cost a couple of thousand using this material. And it kind of looks like foam on there, so I have a sample of that as well, which I'm going to hand around. That's a three-layer material, and in addition to stabilizing the manhole, it also prevents water from coming in and infiltrating the system. This is called inflow and infiltration of water, and that reduces the load on our wastewater treatment plant. So we're probably going to be budgeting to do about 10 of these a year in cases where it's either too difficult or expensive for us to do it ourselves, and in some cases, it costs about the same for us to do it versus having this company do that structural sealant. And sometimes it just simply frees up our team to do other things when the cost is Other things we do on the left, the top left there, you can see, that's a stone crushing operation. All year long, as the DPW is doing projects, they're collecting that old stone, the pulled-up pavement, the various things they're doing in their construction jobs, we save that up. And then once a year, we hire a stone crusher to come in and crush tons upon tons of gravel and stone for us to use in projects throughout the town. That's a huge money saver because we're doing it all locally rather than literally hauling in rock and stone from other places at a great expense. On the right, that's a view of our repair department. We now have a full-time mechanic who works on all the town's vehicles, police, fire, and the Department of Public Works. You're talking street sweepers to fire trucks, pretty amazing savings having someone on hand to do that. And I don't have a picture of this, but I'll mention, we also collect the metal scrap at the transfer station, and we get that recycled, and the proceeds from that also helps keep our costs down. So some of those specific departments within the Department of Public Works, one is the Highway Department, and you know, of course, some of that's kind of obvious, right? They have about 128 miles of roads that they maintain, there's 13 bridges, 475 catch basins, 40 miles of sidewalk, and they also maintain four cemeteries, the downtown sidewalks and street sweeping, downtown trash removal, and townwide rural roadside mowing. And I would mention that, actually, the picture there, that he's mowing the flood wall, which is along by the high school. That's something that we do in partnership with the Army Corps of Engineers, it's a responsibility that we have to do on an annual basis. Complete rebuilds of roads, such as East Gate Street with new storm drains, which it never had before, and a multiped pathway along the south side of the street. Those are all brand-new amenities for Eastern Gate Street or Upper Gate Street. The entirety of Gate Street will have the final paving done this year as well. I'm sure many people will be happy to hear that. We've also rebuilt and upgraded, well, we're working on the rebuild and upgrade of Franklin Lane, but also, as I said, all of Gate Street, but Frank and Cross Streets as well, Phyllis Lane, and East Road, that'll be redone with new paving later this year. We're going to pave it all the way from North Branch to Houghton Lane, and we're working on Silver Street right now. And actually, in recent years, we've also redone Maple Street, Washington Avenue, just to name a few. And by the way, whenever we redo a road, they all get new signage on the roads, and we're also paying attention to something called complete streets, which is a new rule set from the state of Vermont. So whenever we redo a road, we need to take into account all the different users of the road. So that includes pedestrians and making it safer for bicycles and kids as well. You know, bridge work is big bucks, and we are, one of the things that RJ did in a very thoughtful way a couple of years ago was convince the town that we needed our own bridge crew. And wow, have they been exceptionally successful. So they were created in 2024, and they've already proven to be a huge money saver. Some of their recent accomplishments include the new bridge on Mount Anthony Road, those two pictures on the left are some of the early stages of that work, there's more later, that's quite an impressive accomplishment. The refurbishment of the North Street Bridge, you'll see that in a moment. The new bridge on Murphy Road, which is just being worked on now, I'm sorry, the refurbishment, but also removing and replacing the Morgan Street Bridge. That was a big project last year, and you can see that picture right here, that's the final stages, them setting those road panels on that bridge. Also refurbishing the Brooklyn Bridge over the Roaring Branch, and I feel bad that I'm kind of covering this up here, but you can see the before and the after here of those bridge structural parts on the Brooklyn Bridge, and it's just an incredible difference. They make it like new. These guys are concrete experts, and we are very lucky to have them. So here's more of that exciting bridge stuff. This is that Murphy Road Bridge I was talking about earlier. You can see all the damage primarily caused by salt, I'm told, that's on the east side of the river, the north side, I'm sorry, the west side, you can see example of that down here. And this is the work in progress, and it's actually going very quickly, they're ahead of schedule on that, so we should be seeing that being completed quite soon. That image on the top left, gosh, that's a beautiful iron bridge. And believe it or not, there are people out there that are absolutely infatuated with iron bridges. This particular one was built in 1936, and it has been refurbished and looks gorgeous. So if you're one of those iron bridge aficionados, you will absolutely enjoy that. And then on the right, there is that absolutely stunning, impressive Mount Anthony Road Bridge. That's an incredible accomplishment. Doing that work in-house saved the town at least $450,000. It's quite an accomplishment. So this one I call everything in between because these are things you might not know that the DPW is even involved in, and I have the skate park up there on the top left. And that's only one example because very often, it is our Department of Public Works that does the last mile on so many projects, there's that last little bit to take it over the finish line, and that is very often where our Department of Public Works steps in. And by the way, that picture, you can see the shadow there, that's Justin Woodard, and he's on a cherry picker, he snapped that photo, and that photo has been viewed 115,000 times on Facebook. So people are very excited about that particular project. But not that, Willow Park Playground, Stark Playground, so many projects. It's always been the DPW that steps in at the last, along with the buildings and grounds to put the final touches on those. I have that map there, those are two of our municipal forests, two of our bigger proportions, neither of them ironically in Bennington, but Bennington Municipal Forest nonetheless, vestiges of our old water system when it came out of Sucker Pond, also known as Lake Hamilton. We have a forest management plan, and we sustainably harvest those forests for lumber, which then goes back to the town to subsidize work so our taxpayers don't have to. And it is also done with a mind for improving habitat as well as future forestry. And then, of course, in the bottom right, snow plowing, gosh, we're experts on snow plowing, and those guys do a terrific job. So the Water Department, they're responsible for supplying clean water to approximately 15,000 users. That goes through 92 miles of water mains, 4,400 connections. The crew also runs and maintains a water filtration plant, I'll talk about that more in a minute. That's in Woodford, and we have seven pumping stations and five water tanks throughout the town. In addition, they maintain and flush about 650 fire hydrants, that happens twice annually, and that's a state requirement. So in case you're annoyed by that, we have to do it, and it's for a good purpose. It ensures that our fire protection services will always be there when we need them. So some 2024 accomplishments and into this year, 35 hydrant repairs, four new hydrants, 11 water main breaks or leaks were fixed in 2024. Now, that's interesting because so far this year, we haven't had any, and that's in part due to the advances we've been making in the monitoring system we have for the entire water system. This allows us to see problems before they erupt into actual breaks, as there are pressure spikes, et cetera. So again, knock on wood, you never know when one will happen, and when they do, our guys will often work, if they have to, through the night to get these things resolved. So we love when our proactive work is actually helping us not see as many breaks and also addressing them better when they do occur. That image on the top left, that's actually on Benmont Avenue, and it's sort of a, it's an optical illusion, it almost looks like he's standing in that claw, he's in the trench beyond it, but I noticed that when I was putting it in there. This is an interesting one, this is Brian Billard, he's working, they're figuring out a very complicated mess of water and valve systems on Benmont Avenue, and this has been bedeviling them for a number of years because they could never quite turn off all of the water on Benmont Avenue. So that meant when they did have to do a repair, they're working in live water under pressure, which makes a repair or a change quite difficult. Using, some discovered a sketch from 1960 that they found in their archives, he was able to decipher and figure out how that layout went, and we now can shut down Benmont when needed. So that's a good example of being proactive there. We've also extended and installed new municipal water mains on Settlers Road and Spring Hill, and you'll be hearing more about future plans as well as the next presentation later tonight. So what looks like a plain metal building in Woodford on the outside, inside is our state-of-the-art sophisticated water treatment plant. So this is the start of where the water comes from, from Bennington. This is where we treat approximately 613 million gallons of water to our community in one year. We also do reap some financial benefits, we sell excess water produced by the Morgan Spring. A total of 8.29 million gallons of bulk water was sold last year. And by the way, again, that Yankee frugality, that center picture, that's where the water's coming in from the source on Bowles Brook, and we run it through a 15-kilowatt generator to offset the power usage that goes into the water treatment facility. So, by the way, the flat rate for water in Bennington, it comes out to about 54, 57 per month. We rank in the middle to low-middle of water costs compared to other Vermont towns with similar-sized water systems. By the way, the combined cost for water in sewer for our households, that's about $3.61 per day, and that includes the side benefit of having fire protection. So last part of any good water system is, of course, the sewer and wastewater treatment facility. On the left there, you can see, that's a picture of the inside of our pump house. Our pump house is over three stories tall, but you wouldn't know it because there's only one story above ground and then 60 feet, so it's really more than three stories, 60 feet underground is how deep it goes. That is because that is the deepest point of the entire water system for the town. So all the drainage has to hit that low point from there. It's pumped all the way to the highest point in the filtration plant, which you'll see in a minute, and then from there, we let gravity do its work. In the middle, there's an overview picture of that wastewater treatment facility, it's located on Harrington Road. And that picture on the right, I love this, that's a duck there taking off, that's in the final settling ponds before it goes to a, so at this point, it's basically done, there is final settling, but then it goes, we chlorinate it, and then we dechlorinate it before putting it back into the river. By the way, again, just thinking about costs, it comes out to about $54.12 a month for our sewer system. It's about $11 less per month than the average cost in the US. Last year, they treated 1.5 billion gallons of wastewater before being safely released back into the Woomsack River, which is one of the best trout fishing rivers in southwestern Vermont. Sorry, bat and kill, it's just the truth. So there was a composting facility tour, and actually, I'm really proud and happy that we had a couple of our Select Board members there, Jackie and Jim both attended, as well as some of our legislators, Representative Morrissey, as well as Senator Bongartz were there. So, and maybe I should actually, I'll flip a little bit, on the right, this is, of course, that's Larry Gates, he's our Assistant Director and the head of the Water Department. He's showing the temperature gauges in what's called the digester. And the digester is where all that sludge from the sewage goes, there's two large tanks of it. We use natural methane to bubble the mixture and keep it all churned up, and then we use that same methane to power these furnaces to heat up the mixture to 98 degrees, sometimes a little higher, to get that digestion going. And that breaks down that sludge very quickly. And by the way, one of the buildings in the facility has a roof that moves up and down. As it gathers the methane, it'll rise up, and then as it uses the methane, it'll go down. So once it's been digested and dewatered to the extent possible, on the left there, you can see the tour, that's the composting facility area where we mix it with wood chips that we generate right here from the brush that people bring to the transfer station, we wood chip it, we use some of it to make our first level of compost from this. And this is important, and part of the reason we had this tour was because one of the things that is in front of the legislature currently is talking about what to do with sludge. So currently, what we're doing with it is we're taking it, we're composting it, then we're mixing it with dirt, and we are reapplying it in industrial applications throughout town. So not on agricultural lands, but on everything else where we need topsoil. We do test the soil because it's probably one of, I think, 100 different tests they said they do at the wastewater plant for the levels of PFOAs. And sometimes they're non-detect, or sometimes there's more than that, but the fact is, Bennington has PFOA in the soil pretty much everywhere. So in most cases, when we're using this topsoil that we've created, we're actually diluting the amount of PFOAs currently in the soil because the amount is so low in what we're producing. But because there is some, they are considering a law that wouldn't allow us to use it for these sort of industrial applications. What that means is we might have to instead take that sludge, which even, you know, before it's composted, it's 80% water and 20% organic material. Currently, there is one location in Vermont that could accept it. If this law passes, it means that every community in the state would be bringing their stuff there for perhaps maybe a couple few years before that facility is filled up. After that, we would have to send it either to New York for incineration or to Pennsylvania. So I just, the idea of a product that we're currently recycling locally and using locally versus having to haul it hours away to be burned at a cost of using all the fossil fuels to do that, at the cost of trucking this, what's mostly 80% water to these locations, the manpower, the time. I understand they're trying to be environmentally friendly, but in this case, it actually ends up being kind of the opposite. So we're trying to educate our legislative delegation, as well as our Select Board members, so they understand that, how it's currently being used and what those options actually That was a lot, I lingered on that slide, I apologize for that. Good news is we're almost at the end. So hey, at the top left there, that's a picture of that. That's that first location where the sewage is pumped after it comes into that pump building. So it's being pumped up all the way up to this top site. And then from there, again, it feeds into all the other areas using just gravity. On the right, this is Larry showing off our sand filter, which is currently not in use. We're actually looking to replace that. That's one of those big projects we're currently working on. And the design work on that new filtration is about 60% complete. So that was a lot, but I wanted to just remind us that some of the stuff you don't see is some of the most important stuff that a town has to do. And honestly, when it comes to things like sewage and water treatment facilities, you don't want to think about it. So the fact that we have a water department that's not just taking good care of our system, but proactively improving it and making it better, that's a really good place to be. So thank you very much.
All right. Thanks very much, Jonah. As Jonah said at the beginning of his presentation, he's not a DPW expert. But if we do have any questions, maybe we could take those down and Dan could collect those answers for us or someone could collect those answers for us. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Clark?
Just one brief one. We talked about the sludge, how it's being recycled and spread about town and non-residential agricultural areas. Do we have any sort of ongoing monitoring programs to see if that PFAS is accumulating in those areas or the level of it in those areas?
So... Yeah, no, I'll answer to the extent I can. But again, I'm not the expert on this. But they, they are working on developing baselines for the area. And I think that information does exist. Like I said, in general, what we're producing is less than the average concentration that's found in the soils around here. So it actually has a dilutionary effect of making it less PFOA rather than more. And a lot of times there's, there's none detected.
Jonah, when you talked about PFOAs being in the soil most around Bennington, do you know if anybody's ever tested the soil at the garden at the rec center? Or where somebody just started garden at the vet's home?
Yeah, I don't have that information.
And who would be responsible to do that? Whether it's the schools...
We've got information from the ag department that there is no current concern with growing vegetables for human consumption in Bennington. So that's why there's no...
They don't have to test the soil?
No.
You talked about the Complete Streets program. What year did that start?
It's, it's actually a Complete Streets statute, I believe, and it's been several years. I couldn't tell you exactly, but...
Could we get a presentation on that so people understand what could happen in their neighborhood when their street gets redone?
I'm sure we could certainly give some information on the complete. It's a fairly straightforward ordinance that says that when you redo a street, you need to consider bicyclists, cyclists, motorists, et cetera.
So they probably used it when they did Maple Street?
All municipalities are supposed to use it. I think until recently, it has not been, it has not been actively followed by most municipalities.
So this is an actual law?
It's the law in the state of Vermont, yes.
Has it been in place like 10 years or longer?
About 10 years. Do you know, Jim, when, when that law came into place, it's been several years?
You know, I, I don't know exactly, but yeah, the Complete Streets program as it is in law has been around for many years. And there was an initiative just a few years ago to kind of increase the awareness amongst both the municipal governments and the state, quite frankly.
It applies to both state and local roads.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience? All right, Jonah, thank you very much. That was very well done as always. All right, next, we have a Bennington water system update. We're going to hear about the lead line replacement project, proposed water line extensions to address PFAS contamination and the south end water pressure projects. And it just says MSK Engineers here. So I'll ask you to go ahead and let us know who you are.
Good evening. My name is Jason Dolmitch. I'm with MSK Engineers. With me as well is Nicholas Ratsor to make sure I don't say anything inaccurate and to lend his expertise on the water system. The Complete Streets law has been enacted since 2011. So we're going to talk, all right, I'm going to try to do this. Okay, we're going to talk about four separate projects that, that we've lumped into separate projects and then the, the remaining two actually cover several areas. So I'm going to try really hard not to confuse you on that. We're going to give you a brief update on the lead service line replacement project that's been going on since 2019. We're going to talk about the town of Bennington's South End upgrades. That's also been in the works since 2009. That's covering low pressure zones on the south side of town. And then we're going to talk separately about two PFAS initiatives. One that covers Hickory Hill and Monument Avenue extension area as well as the remaining portions that include the southeast portion of town as well as Rocky Lane on the north end of town. So just start with lead service lines. As many of you may know, Bennington had a storied history of installing lead service lines starting around 1880 and continuing through the 1930s and 40s. The, really broadly, just with respect to the water system, I won't, I won't try to compete with Jonah's fantastic update on DPW facilities, but Bennington has a population of around 15,000 people with approximately 4,200 service lines. That water system was constructed in 1890 and most of the service lines at the time were constructed of lead. The, the town of Bennington actually was one of the first communities in the country to install corrosion controls treatment because of the pervasive, because of both the water quality of Bennington's water system as well as the lead, lead service lines in town. So Bennington's been on the cutting edge of lead service line, addressing lead service line issues since the 70s. And as, and the most recent LCRI or lead, I, I actually am not going to remember the acronyms, but it's the lead rule. It's the drinking water rule, which covers lead service lines, requires an inventory and a lead service line replacement plan by October 2024, which the town met. And as I mentioned, we've been working since about 2017 on the first, what was the early stages of an inventory. And then, starting in 2020, we completed a pilot study to confirm our testing methods for identification and removal of lead service lines. And from there, we've conducted, completed three additional contracts and are completing our last contract that will end sometime at the end of this year or the beginning of next year. And then that, that work in progress, starting after the scoping study and between the pilot study, all of this work was covered by an $11 million grant that the state of Vermont gave to the town of Bennington to identify and replace their lead service lines. To date, Bennington has had the highest concentration of lead service lines identified in the state. So that was appropriate that we, that the town was able to get this money. To date, as I mentioned, there's about 4,200 service lines in the community. About 4,000 have been classified. As most of them have been classified non-led, we've done about 300 replacements to date. We have approximately less than 100 remaining either suspected lead service lines or actual lead service lines that are in the process of being replaced. And then we have approximately 200 that are remaining unknown. So still a little bit of work to do, but we've made significant progress on identifying most of the service lines in town. So the next steps, we are working towards utilizing all of the funding that's available that the town has received to replace as many of the absolute identified lead service lines. And that, that will be closing out sometime in the winter of this year. And then, and as I mentioned, we're prioritizing known and identified lead service lines for replacements. And then based on the remaining work left to comply with the standard and as well as to, to address any unknown or lead service lines, we'll be exploring additional funding and coming to you with a recommendation once we have a more complete picture of where we are in the project at the completion of the work. And that, the, but we do have plenty of time. The, the deadline for completing any, any lead service line removal or identification is slated for 2034 by the rule. And so just, just so you know, we've worked with, we've been working with many other communities. Most of them have only completed the inventory, which we did our first inventory for the town back in 2017. So you guys are very far along in the process. Do I, just as a point of order before I move on, do we want to ask questions at the conclusion of each update? Or do you want me to run through my presentation and then you can ask, we can go back and ask questions on, on that?
My instinct is that it might be easier to go as we go, but does anyone have feelings otherwise? Does anyone have questions on that first section? Nancy?
For those of us who paid to replace that line years ago, do you still need to come to just check it off to make it official?
So you had your lead service line replaced?
Oh, 30 years ago, I still have the bill.
Then you would either have been identified in the non-led category as long as you responded to one of our mailings.
Okay, I'll check and see because they kept wanting to come do it. And I said, I didn't have, I just want to make sure I'm not going to hear in 10 years. You know, you need to pay to do something.
Well, I mean, we can certainly, we'll, we'll check your address and we can, I can reach out if there's any...
And I know some other people have, did the same thing. And we can't get reimbursed, right?
You cannot be reimbursed, no. This is to address the remaining lead service lines.
Jason, I think this is a good point to remind folks that if they haven't responded to a request to have their lines tested, they should, even if they think that they're not led because it takes, it decreases that list of unidentified.
Correct, yeah. I mean, we're, we're talking about 200 units at this point. So, but if you are one of those units, we would really appreciate getting in touch with you. Because it would be, it would be great to, to get that whittled down as low as possible.
Jackie?
Hi, Jason. So I purchased my house recently. How would I find out if the previous owner had, had the lines inspected?
You could reach out probably to our office and, and you can, and we can check our records.
Okay, thank you. One more. So you say up here, additional funding for the work that still needs to be completed. But the amount of work that you've done so far, have you been able to estimate what those costs might be?
So because construction's active right now, we've decided at this point, our, our goal is really to make sure that we expend the remaining funds and we're targeting known lead service lines. And we're going to do an assessment at that point. Because even though we've, we've noted that there's approximately 100 lead service lines, some of those are going to be determined throughout this construction process to be non-led. So the testing method identif... Without going through the details about how we determine whether something's led or non-led in the absence of a visual inspection. So if you walk into somebody's home, they have, they have essentially, all you see is a copper line coming into the house. We don't stop there because it's possible that a portion of the percentage of that transfer, if and only if they used it for lead service line replacement at 100% reimbursement. Bennington had done an inventory and had positively identified lead through a grant that the town had received back in 2017. And then subsequently, the town did a planning loan to identify additional lead service lines in 2018. And that positioned the town to essentially argue and capture that the entirety of that money from the state transfer. The bipartisan infrastructure bill that was passed has money available for lead service line replacement. The terms are different. There is plenty of that money because the available money for the state outmatches the identified need at this point. The, what, it's, it seems like the town might be eligible for an additional $100,000. That's 100% reimbursable. And then any subsequent monies that they might request, they could get at a 50% reimbursement rate. So it's not totally free. But we, so like I, I mean, like I said, based on the, based on what's left and the costs that's available and the type of work that needs to be done, we'll work with the DPW to come with an appropriate recommendation to the town at that point.
Anyone else? Does anyone in the audience have any questions on lead line replacement? Excellent. Part two.
All right. This is, the, we, we call it in our, our office, the South End upgrades. This covers the, this covered the construction of the town's water storage tank on Mount Anthony, which is on the former SVC campus. And covers the area of Bennington approximately south of Week Street. And that it was constructed to address low pressure during maximum flow events in two specific areas in town, which was essentially the Stonehedge area of town as well as Margaret Lane and Crescent Boulevard. This project's been, began construction in 2014, but it's been in planning, planning since 2008. And we are approximately, we are more than halfway done with the project. The water storage tank, the pump station and approximately two miles of main have been constructed. And we have about 1.4 miles left to construct. That, those remaining funds were, were, are allocated for a $4 million bond vote where that was passed in March of 2023. And the final design and permitting was completed in the summer of 2023 as well. This project, because of the identification of contaminated waters, water sources south of this area, this project, we worked with the DPW to start to slow walk this a little bit to see how it may play with work that might be, need to be done on Monument Avenue extension. It's possible that we may be able to remove some portions of the required areas because we'll have, be able to install a loop in a different direction for the PFAS project. So that's becoming clear. Anyway, sorry, I've, I've gone way past. This is the, for those of you who are familiar with the south of town, this is, if I, if I, yeah, I can do that. So this is, this is the Southern Vermont College campus or the former Southern Vermont College campus. If you've gone for hiking on Mount Anthony, you've probably walked by the water storage tank. There's also a pump station down by the former baseball field. That takes water from Monument Avenue and pumps it up to, up to the, the, halfway up the top of the mountain and then redistributes it through, down to the hospital area along Dewey Street and, and down and connects with Weeks, near Week Street. And we have remaining lines to upgrade going up to the top of Stonehedge and to the end of Margaret Lane. That, the, and as I mentioned, and we'll talk about this soon, but this area in pink is the portion of area that has wells that are contaminated with PFOA. And so we are working on optimizing the remaining areas to construct with additional water system upgrades that may be able to be funded in this area. upgrades that may be able to be funded in this area. So our next steps really are just to evaluate the impacts, oop, okay. Evaluate the impacts of Monument Avenue PFAS projects and potentially reduce the scope of this to find some cost savings for the project. Our goal is still to, however, to construct or to do bidding for this project in 2025 or the end of 2025 into 2026. We're looking towards a construction season of 2026 with the goal of this project being done by 2027. Once this project is completed, it will be, to my knowledge, I believe it is the last condition on the town's water operating permit. So this, which would be a big deal. They've, the town's been checking it off over the years. This was a big chunk. And it's, it would be really nice to see this one come off, come off the list of conditions. Sorry if that was a little convoluted, but I'll, I'll take questions on that if you have any. Yep. Nancy?
Nancy, go ahead.
I don't remember if we talked about this, if it was earlier this year, late last year. But we talked and voted in favor, was it a grant or called a loan, that I thought was going to go South Street to Stonehedge? And there wouldn't be any cost to the taxpayers. What was that we voted on, Dan?
I think the planning, the planning funds.
Correct. So this, that's, that's the next project. So the portion that you voted on was for planning monies and then ultimately for design funds. That was, that's 100% reimbursable because it's done to address contamination for, by PFOA. And so that's, that, that portion of the BIL funds is called emerging contaminants funds. And those are at 100% reimbursement. This is an operations project, which has been in the works for many years. And it's, this is money that needs to be expended by the taxpayers because there's not grant money for it.
Okay, I guess I don't understand. If you could go back to the map, it shows it going up Dewey Street. I thought it was going to go up through South Street and that would connect to Stonehedge from that way.
So all of these lines here are existing mains, right?
Yep.
The, the, this portion of Stonehedge has wells. And this portion of, in order for all of this to work and provide good water quality, we will need to connect this portion of Stonehedge with South Shire Drive and similarly down below as well. So our goal, and this is going into the next project, but our goal is to create, is to create loops in these areas so that you don't have any stagnant water.
Okay, I'll, I'll have to go back and look at the minutes. I, maybe I misunderstood. I thought that project going over South Street was going to go, I didn't realize all that pink area was considered Stonehedge. And I thought I asked, does this mean the town, the water and sewer users won't be, be paying anything? And I thought the answer was yes, so I'll go back.
Different project.
For that project, that's correct.
This is a water pressure project. The PFAS project is completely separate.
They are in the same vicinity, but they are different projects.
Yep. We, we talked about the water pressure problem being solved going up through Margaret Lane through South Street. Are you talking about coming down Dewey Street that way to solve the water pressure problem?
So, I think, I think we're getting confused. Maybe we need to move on to the next. And then Nancy, if you still have that question. But this, this is a separate and distinct project that predates the PFAS issue.
That's correct.
Have another bond vote based on what's going to happen going to South Street that way?
No.
Okay.
No, that's not, I mean, I, I will talk a little bit about what funding has been identified for that area. It's not complete, but at this time, we, there's, there's no plan to recommend a bond vote for additional funds at this point that the town would have to get a loan for. This, what I'm describing right now is something that's already been voted on.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll just remind folks in the audience that if you're, if you're talking amongst yourselves, we can hear you quite well. Does anyone else on the board have any questions on this section? Anyone in the audience have questions on this section? I'm sorry, Clark, I didn't see you.
Ken, backtrack with what I was saying. This project was going to kind of overlap with the PFAS and help fund some of the resolution of PFAS contamination. Is that correct, Dan? I thought we talked about that one time or another.
So I'm going to let Jason talk about it in his next presentation because I think that's part of it. But the answer is a portion of, it's possible that a portion of the project that was going to be funded by that bond vote could be covered, could be by a appropriately designed project to address some of the PFAS contamination. Is that accurate, Jason?
Almost.
Okay.
Really what, this, this area here needs to be constructed, right? Because these are, these, these are smaller diameter lines that when, when there's a fire flow on them, they will not, they will essentially reduce pressure. This, this is also a small diameter line that's slated for upgrade. If I, if we are able to construct a loop, then you have bidirectional flow. And it's possible that we'll be able to meet the town's permit requirements without doing a full replacement of this area. And so that's, that's what we're, that's what we're evaluating right now based on what, what we can have, making sure that the project is funded because we haven't, not everything is locked in place at this point. So we have to, the decision point is really around, you know, do we feel confident that we're going to be able to build this portion so that we can leave this line in place and not expend those funds?
Okay, I did see, anyone else? I did see one hand, I thought, in the audience? No? Okay.
All right.
Just one last question.
Sure.
For the water pressure. Nothing you're going to do on Upper Dewey Street will address that. You need to do that on South Street, correct?
We, so Dewey Street is constructed. Are you speaking about Monument Avenue Extension?
The red line coming down is that Dewey Street I'm looking at right there?
No, that is Jefferson Heights.
Okay, then that's what started me off.
And that's Stonehedge, and then that's Merson and Crescent and Margaret Lane.
So the water pressure we're going to do is up in the Heights someplace?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. All right. Any other? I'll move on. So I just wanted, we just wanted to give a brief overview of the areas south of town that were impacted by PFOA. This is a, this is a state map that was published by Weston and Sampson for the state of Vermont. I believe it's up on the website. Just, so for those of you who are not familiar, red, orange, and green are all different levels of detection of PFOA. Blue is, large dark blue is non-detect and light blue is the presence of wells that haven't been tested yet. So you can see there's a high concentration of areas around Monument Avenue and South Shire Drive, as well as the end of Stonehedge, that have detections. There are also area, and then there's also, basically all the homes on Hickory Hill have detections. And then areas, basically as far as the southern part of Bennington have detections as well. These areas, Hickory Hill and South Shire, South Shire, Monument Avenue Extension, were tested first and were found to have contaminant levels. And these areas were tested later and portions were found to have contamination. So the reason why this project is rolling out in sort of a similar fashion as the area on the north side of town, which started in 2016, that, that portions of those projects were developed at different rates based on the timing of when concentrations of wells were positively, had positive PFOA testing results. So that leads me to just point, all of the areas that we're looking into and then the particular phases that we're in. So there's a portion of Rocky Lane that's in Bennington. The state has also asked us to look at how portions of East Road and Shasbury could possibly be served. Like I said, Hickory Hill, the South Shire, Monument Avenue and Route 7, and then everything, every other road in the southeast corner of town. That would include Middle Pownell Road, South Stream Road, and the connecting streets off of those as well. We've really broken those out into what we are calling the Monument Avenue Extension. Don't be fooled by the name, it also includes Hickory Hill. That project is, we completed a preliminary engineering report in 2024 and we're, we are nearing submission for a state permit application for the areas. So we've completed final design for that project as well. We estimate the construction cost to be about $8 million for those portions. The draft intended use plan, which is how the state intends to spend their monies from the drinking water state revolving loan funds, identifies $5 million for this project for the town of Bennington. So when, so this is just a zoom in so that if you're, if you're in that zone, you can find your house and you'll know that we've at least to this date designed a solution for the, these, these areas in this particular project. And so our next steps really is to complete the permitting for this project and the, and the final design. And then at that point, the, we will need to confirm that the town intends to seek monies for that. That would include a, a loan application. As I mentioned, the, the intended use plan, as long as it is adopted as it's, as it is in its draft form, will have $5 million allocated that the town can apply for. That is 100% reimbursable. As I've, however, there's a $3 million gap in today's dollars between what, what is allocated in the intended use plan versus what, what we believe the cost will be. So we will, if, if we choose to go only for the $5 million that's available, then we can, we will be looking to figure out a cohesive project that will cover those dollars and that will get the project at least started. This is, the state is in talks with St. Obane. They have, I believe they've notified them that they are potential, that they are the potential polluter. We encourage the, the select board and the townspeople to begin talking to the state and letting them know that they would like to see a resolution in the same manner that was completed in 2016 if, if St. Obane comes to the table. So that, as, this, this will be, so that, that will be the most that we can do until additional funding is identified for this project. And I'll, I'll just move briefly on to the next section. So as we pointed out, there's a Rocky Lane, Middle Pownell Road, South Stream, Colville, Niles, Fuller Road, and, and portions in Lower East and Shasbury have also been identified. We've completed a, we've, we've completed the final draft of a scope that covers the first portion of a preliminary engineering report. Once the state approves the scope, we will be coming to the select board with a loan application for similarly 100% reimbursable and emerging contaminants funds to complete the step one, what we call the step one or the preliminary engineering report for those areas. And so hopefully we'll be able to take the same path that we're taking with the South Street, with the Monument Avenue project. It'll just be at a different, at different pacing. And as I, this is the exhibit, as we said, that this area is vast geographic area. And, and then also, this, this area, as we've mentioned, covers, the majority of it is actually in the town of Shasbury. And as, as I got ahead of myself, our next steps would be to apply for a loan that covers the PER and then to complete the PER, the preliminary engineering report for this area.
Nancy?
Is the state asking that Bennington allows some of Shasbury to hook onto our system?
The state is asking us to evaluate whether we can. If, whether we, whether it is technically feasible. And the, after that, that, if, if we deem that it is, then that can be a discussion that the town has with Shasbury and as whether they, whether they can come up with an agreement to be a consecutive water system.
Has Shasbury talked to North Bennington?
This, this portion could not be connected to North Bennington's water system because of its location.
I don't know if you were here that night when we talked about this, but didn't Stu recommend against not having Shasbury hook onto our system on the East Road?
I, I don't, first of all, I think that'd be out of character for Stuart to say that, but I don't call that.
I'll go back and watch the meeting then, but.
But this is simply a feasibility. We haven't even had a request, formal request from Shasbury. When, and if that happens, that'll be something we can evaluate.
Well, I thought that was a question some people from Shasbury have asked.
For point of order, it's not something we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, it's a potential thing that could happen down the road, but I think that's the time we really need to discuss that. It's ask them to look into the possibility. Looking into a possibility doesn't mean it's planned.
Is all of this information we're looking at going to be posted on the town website?
This program presentation? Absolutely, we can provide that to Jonah. Well, Jonah already has it, so he can, he can take it.
Yeah, just, I want to be clear. So the $3 million gap is something that we should be encouraging the, the state to aggressively pursue with, with St. Obane. If, if those talks don't prove productive, are there other funding sources, like where the original $5 million came from that could be accessed in a subsequent year?
So right now, what the state is doing is putting a lifetime cap on funding available for specific projects. So at least because the emerging contaminants fund is about $9 million a year, and at this point, I believe they're anticipating additional projects to appear. Where, we put in an application for this and the requests were relatively light, so we got as much as they were willing to fund for this year. So, which is why, you know, it's our opinion that even if you can't, even if the additional $3 million isn't known, we may want to lock that money in because we don't know how long St. Obane, how, we don't know the conditions under which, whether the state will be successful with St. Obane or any, or the future polluting party, the identified polluting party.
And for the, this, that big geographic area in the southeast that's in the kind of the planning phase now, what are, what are the funding prospects for that if, you know, the, the $5 million cap is in? know, the, the $5 million cap is in place that affects the other two areas and those are who knows how much? I mean.
I, I wish I had a crystal ball. I mean, we're really focused on technical feasibility for those areas because the, because there are, you know, what we see is some very specific identifiable challenge that we want to be able to suss out before we are even able to estimate the cost.
And is that, sorry, but is that, that area, maybe the state feels like they have a relatively clear, relatively clear approach for the other areas with St. Obane. Is that area in the southeast, is, have they done studies in that area to try to link the contaminants to a particular source?
I'm not, I'm not up on what, where their models are and what, how comfortable they feel about identifying, identifying the polluting party. I, I believe that I'm correct, that they have at least notified St. Obane that they've identified them as a possible party, but I don't know any, any additional knowledge beyond that.
Clark?
Hi. Could you go back to the screen? It had the wells in, is it the state?
Sure. Yep, the state, the state map.
You know, I keep hearing about, you know, emerging contamination, and I see a lot of private wells, of course, this is kind of parochial, out to the west side of town. And have we even looked out there just randomly testing some of these private wells? Do we know?
On the west side of town?
Yes.
Yeah, so the west side of town was pretty extensively tested during the original, the 2016 project. So you can see, I mean, this is actually, this map is like, you know, a continuation of what those are. So all of these, all of these are wells that ended up being, being closed because all of these areas got a water line extension because, from the, from that project.
Right. I understand that. My, again, kind of parochialism, I live just past the end of the town water, and I'm looking at the map, but I don't see any evidence of the private wells out that way having been looked at.
I believe they did test it because they, they basically tested, they essentially tested all the way down to Route 9 and all the way west, and then all the way to Route 7 and beyond. So I, I can't tell you whether they tested all the wells, but I did, they did some pretty extensive testing in the northwest quadrant.
All right. I was just concerned I didn't want to have that clear in my mind and my neighbor's mind that in fact the area has been looked at.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, the, the story that, you know, the guys at Waste Management that were working on the project, they, they sort of, they stopped finding contaminants south of Route 9 at that time. And so they sort of let that, they were like, okay, that's, that's the end. Sort of similarly, they found, they stopped, they, they went about halfway up Rice Lane and they started getting nanditecs there. And it took another, several other months for somebody at, you know, in the, I'm, I'm blanking the development that's up there.
Apple Hill.
Apple Hill, thank you. There, for them to start testing up in Apple Hill, and then they found that another wave of, of contaminants. So similarly, this, this is what's happening, that they, they're just, they're continuing to look for the limits in this area.
Like, I, I just think it, again, the residents in the area would appreciate seeing a map that says our area's been relatively looked at and is, is clear. You know, the exposure on Apple Hill is something that's new, so I just, I think a lot of folks would appreciate hearing.
We're on the solution side. I think if anybody doesn't have, anybody has a well in Bennington that hasn't been tested and, and the state's willing to test it for them, they should reach out to the state and, and they'd be more, I believe if they're in the impacted area, that they're of area of concern, they'd be more than willing to test it.
Jay, can you give folks the name of the, or department that they should contact? Because I know that there's, I know that I've given, I don't have it in front of me, I've given folks information, they've been able to reach out and get, and get, either get their well tested or have information sent to them that shows that that area had been recently tested.
I'm going to throw Richard Spees under the bus. He's with Waste Management, so Richard, if you're out there, sorry. Yeah, he would be the, he would be the guy to contact. And if there's a, and he, but he is also very helpful, and he's been in Bennington a lot, and he knows a lot of the residents. So he's, if, if there's somebody else that needs to come down, he will make sure that they get in contact with him.
So maybe you could just spell his name and people can look it up?
Uh, yeah, Spees, it's German for spear, and I will make sure that I have the right spelling.
Yeah, and while you're doing that, I think the first thing you want to ask for is the maps of testing that have been done, because when the first round of testing was done, they tested, you know, up to Shasbury and, and all the way over to Hoozick, along the state line and down. So may very well include people that live near where you do in the West End, but there are, there are maps that look kind of like that, that, that cover the West End. So ask for that first.
Yeah, that, that was my thoughts, that looking at that, our area is literally off the map.
Well, this, this is, this map is really targeted for this area.
Right.
They, they have extensive maps from the prior work that I believe are still up on the website that cover the north and west portion of town that was, that was in the original project.
Okay, that, that, that's good to know, and, you know, I hope folks.
Spees is S.P.I.E.S.E., so Richard Spees, and he's with the State of Vermont, Waste Management Division.
Sarah?
So I have a quick question. I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure. The estimate for the 8 million funding that's available, possibly, is that, that specific to our Bennington constituents? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that, because just talking about Shasbury and a little bit of Pownell, I just want to make sure that.
Yep.
That's iterated for anyone listening.
That's correct. That, the, as, the 8 million is really just the first portion that was included in the original preliminary engineering report, and that's basically the triangle that's south of Stone, that includes the southern end of Stonehedge, all of Southshire, and then portions along South Street and Monument Avenue Extension.
And Hickory Hill.
And Hickory Hill, yes.
And that, that 8 million is the cost, the 5 million is what's funded?
Correct. That's correct.
Anyone in the audience? We'll take, you have to come up to the microphone, please, and the microphone right here, so Cat TV can pick you up and identify yourself again, please.
George Latimer Schmidt. Looping the main down Monument to Southshire and then back up to Stonehedge and Jefferson Heights, that's the $8 million estimate with Hickory Hill. Looping's obviously a good concept because you're feeding pressure from two directions. Would that reduce the cost of upgrading the lines in Jefferson Heights? And could that salt, that cost saving be applied to the $8 million pool? You know, would it, would it obviate the need for the Stonehedge line being, I don't know what it is, a six inch to an eight inch or whatever? Seems like there could be some trade-offs between the two projects that might benefit the $8 million portion.
I, yeah, I mean, that's not a decision that I, I can make. I mean, there's certainly, if, if the town wants, if, if there's money available in excess of the, of the construction, actual construction cost, then that's certainly something that they can, they could look at.
You know, there's a lot of test pits on our road and around our neighborhood. Did you find a lot of ledge rock?
I'm going to look at my colleague Nicholas. How do we do with ledge, Nicholas?
Not a whole lot, except that first, I'll write there.
Okay, so that might save a little bit.
It's possible, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Tom Kelly. I live in the Southshire neighborhood. Jim, I hardly ever disagree with you, but, you know, we should be going after St. Obane for the whole 8 million, not just the 3 million that we can't get out of the state, quite honestly. And when we had the meeting here, I believe it was in December, Richard Spees was here. Yeah, it was my understanding that they were having initial discussions with St. Obane about absorbing the total cost of this project, not just whatever we couldn't get reimbursed from the state. So I would strongly suggest that we communicate that to the state DEC, that, you know, we expect St. Obane to pay for everything, not just spread $3 million out, you know, in, in their pocket and then the rest of our constituents here in the state of Vermont having to pick up the balance. That was one point. The other is, in that meeting, which I believe was in December, when Tim Schroeder and his group of students from Bennington College were here, they did do some pretty extensive studies about the prevailing winds and, you know, what has proven out to be the testing further south and further east in town is following the prevailing winds. And their, you know, hypothesis was that, you know, this was all airborne contamination that settled into the, into the soils and it's, you know, washing down into the groundwater. So that expectation that we're going to continue to see more and more contamination as we go, south and east in town, is probably going to hold true. But I just, again, I really wanted to emphasize that, you know, we should be putting our feet on the back of, the neck of St. Obane. I mean, this is, they bought a pig and a poth, you know? That's neither here nor there for us. We're living with the consequences. Most of us in the, in the neighborhood are drinking bottled water at this point. The faster we can get this done, the better. I guess my last question is, you know, what communication has the select board had with the state DEC since December, you know, to get an update on how those negotiations are going?
Dan, those communications generally go through the town, not directly through us, so.
Right, and I, I can't speak to, because I haven't been involved in those. I have been talking to Jason about reaching out to DEC and checking out on the status of those, that litigation. I can say based on experience that I understand the desire to, to get the 8 million, and maybe someday we will, but I would urge us to expend the 5 million that we have in hand as soon as possible to address this problem as soon as possible, perhaps seeking retroactively the 5 million. I can also say that St. Obane could probably stretch out this litigation for 10 to 20 years. So to, to think that we may get funding from St. Obane in a short period of time is, is not reasonable, not likely. It's possible that we could negotiate some sort of small amount in a shorter period of time, but St. Obane's not going to roll over. They feel like they've already given, they should be giving more, they may be technically liable for more, but that doesn't mean that's going to happen in a reasonable timeframe. So I think the most important thing is to do everything we can to address this problem with the funding we have, even if that means the seeking federal and state funding in the interim while the state continues to battle with St. Obane. But, you know, I, we just really need to try to address the needs of our folks as soon as possible with the funds on hand, at hand.
I'll, I'll agree with both of you. I never disagree with Tom. The, yeah, I, I think it's, it seems to me that we definitely need to have a conversation with the state about the status of the negotiations. And I'm frankly, at this point, just as interested to hear where they are with their technical analysis of the, the source, because that, that's going to weigh very heavily on how successful it will be with pursuing St. Obane and, and, you know, whether, as Dan said, it's going to, if it's, if it's really, if it's likely but sufficiently questionable, I mean, that could be, you're like you suggested, Dan, you know, 10, 15 years before that's resolved, and who knows how it's resolved, or whether it's a little bit, or whether there's some real clear tracking that corresponds with what, you know, like the Bennington, the Bennington College study said, that, that provides some strong evidence. So, I mean, I think we, I think we need to have a, do have that talk with the state to see where they are with the negotiation and to, to really get a handle on what the negotiations might look like going forward to see how aggressively we should pursue, potentially pursue other funding sources. Thanks.
Sarah?
Yeah, this, I did have a conversation a few years ago with Senator Welsh in his office for a different group that I belong to, and this, this is something on his mind. So I would encourage you to write to Senator Welsh's office along with our other congressional delegates and our states, of course, they're very helpful on this. So I really would encourage you to write to his office and along with others, because this is on top of his mind and has been. I know there's a lot of other stuff there, but this is, yeah.
Anyone else?
Jim, or Tom, I just offer, I would be happy to try to arrange a conversation, at least an initial conversation with the Secretary of the Agency for Natural Resources and perhaps the Chair and the Vice Chair, and maybe even inviting a representative down to the select board to give us an update. They may not be able to share openly some of their litigation strategies, et cetera, but we can certainly get some baseline information. And if that's the direction you'd like me to take, I can try to arrange that as soon as possible.
All right, yeah, let's do that. All right, thank you very much. That was a lot of information.
Thank you.
It's good to be up to date. Thanks.
All right, next we have the manager's report.
Couple of things, not any action items, but some information. Just a reminder, Skate Park grand opening on September 19th. If you look at Shannon's report, has all the details, but it starts at 5:00 PM on September 19th. I know there are at least three bands and a food truck involved, and the cops call. Just a heads up for folks, the Recreation Center pool, which has been closed for the last two weeks for annual maintenance, is open back up today, so that pool is, is open and ready for use. I can announce some good news on the Energizer project. The environmental remediation work that was required by the state has been completed as confirmed by Paul Dansrow, our building inspector. He, he issued a certificate of completion on that work today. Now, that's the physical work. Obviously, the state will have to do their own certificate of completion regarding whether or not the, the technical work was done. But we do feel confident that that, at least that first step in, in redeveloping the Energizer project has occurred. It has been a longtime issue that we've been concerned about is that having a contaminated building in the middle of that neighborhood, it has now been remediated at least to minimum standards. Whether it needs additional remediation to meet any future redevelopment plan, that's to be determined, but it is essentially a safe site now with regard to the identified contaminants there, which were mostly vapor intrusion issues from solvents in the ground. Jonah mentioned briefly this more, this afternoon or this evening about work, it's on Silver Street that's happening. Most of that work will happen right around the library and it'll be significant improvements to that area, complete rebuild of the, of the street between Union and Main, and also complete redo of the sidewalks surround, in that area, including in front of the library on Main Street. And I will have to say that my DPOW folks really, really like the library director. They've gotten along great and they really appreciate her, her willingness to work with folks and understanding, and I think they're really looking forward to improving that whole area for the betterment of the community. I have some other stuff that we can talk about for next agenda, but I'll save that.
Okay.
Got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Skateboard Park, the town got a $200,000 grant last year to complete the rest of the work that wasn't the concrete park itself. Have we stayed within that $200,000 grant?
So I'm going to say yes, but I'm assuming you're talking about the downtown transportation grant that was, that was.
I don't know.
Okay.
If I look in here, there's a couple. I thought we had 200,000 to finish all the work around the park that wasn't the skateboard park itself.
So there was, I think if, if I recall correctly, that was a downtown transportation grant, then yes, we have stayed within that cost amount for that particular grant, yes.
So the town employees who've been working down there last summer and this summer, they're getting paid out of that grant?
No, that is in-kind work. We, we were very clear from the beginning that we would be doing significant in-kind work for that project.
Then I'd like to find out what that cost is.
We don't, we don't track our time for per project if we're not trying to get reimbursed for it.
I would just like to know what it costs the taxpayers for the amount of time the town employees were down there doing all that work.
Just for point of order here, there was no incremental cost? This board agreed to that?
Yeah.
I don't know why we're relitigating in the past.
Yeah, he was clear on, it was clear when we applied that there was going to be some in-kind work required.
Well, I think there's been quite a bit of work, the amount of people. Well, I think there's been quite a bit of work. The amount of people that were down.
This board agreed that the town staff would do that work and there would be no incremental cost.
And I actually, I go past there every day and I'd say they, they worked very, very quickly and efficiently on this project.
I'm not questioning the quality of work. I'm questioning the amount of time without even knowing what it costs the taxpayers for that work.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Um, yeah. Who owns Energizer now?
Energizer. Energizer owns it.
Oh, so we're able to do work while they still own it?
We didn't do the work Energizer did. We have no, we have no responsibility whatsoever for the Energizer property at this time. Let me be clear.
Okay. Well, no, I'm just surprised they're doing, that they're suddenly doing this when they.
It's under contract and that, I'm sure, I can't speak to the contract, but I'm sure that's one of the conditions.
Okay.
Okay. So upcoming agenda, I have, we'll have the St. Francis of Assisi Society talking about their cat rescue work, working on the feral cat issue here in Bennington. We'll have Mary Cohen coming down from Cornerstone.
Is that, is that confirmed, Tom?
Um, I hadn't heard otherwise.
I, I talked to her just briefly and she confirmed that she was planning to come down on the 22nd.
And that's what I have. Danny mentioned you had some other things?
Um, yeah. So in connection with what prompted us asking Cornerstone to come down, there will also be a final report on the Squire, the Squire House Recovery Housing Project at the next, at the next meeting, which as you know, Cornerstone was involved in. We're also working on, and it could be next meeting or a meeting after, depending upon how busy our schedule is, a presentation on kind of the background vacant properties, existing law possibilities. We're not going to propose a ordinance or anything like that because we think that, that we have to reach out to a significant amount of stakeholders before we make any recommendations regarding that. But we will be giving up some baseline information about existing issues, existing regulation, possible, possible additional regulations we could adopt, but no formal recommendation. If the board feels comfortable with that information or would like that information, we, we try to have that ready for the next meeting. I know that Jonah and Paul and Bridget are working on that. I also have one other item that we haven't talked about in the past. I don't believe, because I was not involved in it. Perhaps Stuart has mentioned it to the board in the past, but you may remember that the Maplewood subdivision folks, that's Duffy Drive, Jane Lane, Hildrehill, they have longed hoped to have the town take over and accept maintenance of those roads. And the town has been consistent in their message that they needed to bring those roads up to spec by getting them paved up to our specifications and to the width that we would, would expect. They have secured funding to do that. RJ Jolly has reviewed the roads and feels comfortable that the, that the proposed project, which we will oversee, and in fact, we will hire the contractor, once the money is in place with the town, and oversee that work so we know it will be done correctly. But if that occurs, they will, you know, before we proceed with that, we'll have to talk to the Select Board perhaps as early as the next meeting, and I would hope it would be the next meeting, with, regarding your willingness as a, as a Select Board to accept those roads if they are brought up to the town specifications. And that has always been the message that we've given to them, but we've never formally acted on that at the Select Board level. And I'm working with our council to make sure that we have all the necessary steps that they'll need to take to formally dedicate that roadway to us and the steps we need to take to accept it if, if the board so chooses. So I'm hoping that that will be on next, next meeting's agenda as well, subject to Jim and Tom's approval. So that's all I had for next agenda, which I think is rounding out to be a fairly full agenda.
It sounds like it might be a full agenda. All right. Other business?
Sorry, Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That leaves the Energy Committee up in flux that was brought up at the last meeting.
I think the consensus was that we don't need to hear from them immediately.
I'm glad to hear that. I couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Also, I add, I don't think it'll be a surprise to anybody, but I'll just say for the public, we will have to have a conversation at some point about a more permanent appointment for the town manager position.
And, and as far as the upcoming agenda, I just want to say, as far as Cornerstone Housing Partners goes, I know that, that Mary Cohen's coming in to talk about a particular project, but I, I just want to make sure that she, I, I think there's sufficient interest in what, what their, you know, what their new operations are and what their plans are, that maybe she could, we could ask her to do a kind of a broader presentation on, on their program and how they're handling outreach in Bennington and things like that.
Very good. All right. Other business. Nancy?
Yeah, I had two requests for the agenda, so I guess I'll bring them up now.
Okay.
I'm asking that we review the town loan policy once again. When we talked about it earlier, I don't remember anybody suggesting that the Energy Committee wanted to be involved in town loans. And if that's the case, I want the Select Board to have to have the public discussion and to vote to approve a loan that they're asking for or not. The Bennington County Alliance is my second request. I don't think many people in Bennington know who all the groups and organizations are that make up the alliance. I don't know. But I believe for over two years, they've been holding meetings about the future of the town of Bennington. I believe town officials have been working with them. The concern I have is I think very few of these meetings have been public. I, I don't know how Bennington voters can be blocked from participating and discussing the future of our town. So I guess I want the leaders of each group to start coming and telling us what they feel is the vision they see for Bennington, to see if the board and the public supports it.
All right. Anything else?
Well, no. I mean, again, hasn't, haven't these meetings been happening?
I've written, I've written down your requests and I'll look into them.
Okay.
And I will get back to you.
But am I correct? These meetings have been happening for over two years?
The group has been meeting.
And town officials have been working with the groups?
Mm-hmm.
We, we're not here to, to discuss it because it wasn't on the agenda, so we took the notes.
I took the notes. I'll look into that. And if it's something appropriate, we will bring it forward.
So nobody can answer the question?
Well, we're not going to ask that question right now because we don't have people here, first of all, from that group. And secondly, secondly, this isn't the time that we're going to actually.
Well, this is other business. And so I'm very concerned if we've had groups discussing things in Bennington like homelessness and housing, and I don't even know what else, while our citizens haven't been able to participate. I've asked several times for us to have an honest public discussion about homelessness in Bennington, and the rest of the board doesn't seem to want to talk about it.
I've noted your concerns here, Nancy, and thank you very much. I will look into it. Sarah?
I just want to say that I'm thrilled to hear about the Union Street improvements and that my car will not bottom out at the bottom anymore. So that's, that's great. That's all for me.
Jim?
Thanks, Tom. And, yeah, I don't want to put, didn't want to put this one under upcoming agenda because it's a big one, but the discussion about town road specifications and taking over roads and everything reminded me of my, one of my daily drives down Northside Drive and the fact that that, that segment of highway is a state highway, but it's particularly important to, to the town of Bennington. And it's, it, it goes through periods of being in particularly poor repair and is an inadequate road. And I, I would like to engage with the State Department of Transportation at some point, at some level, and start to talk about that again. Tom?
Jackie?
Nothing tonight.
Clark?
Hi, thanks. Three things. What I would like to do is, I guess maybe here under the agenda is also our discussion of this, our Economic Development Committee that we've been kind of putting together. I guess maybe we can do a presentation in the coming meeting, if not the next one, definitely the one following, to what's going on there. The next one is a small one. You know, I remember the chief talking about the skate park, which is going to be a big thing. And he said, if people aren't following the rules, don't call the police. I'm just wondering what, what, what can we do if we have to put something together?
Really wreaking havoc, yeah. Call the police. Just speaking off the cuff really, but.
No, actually, and, and the final one is something someone approached me about and I tell the truth, I had to say, I don't know. Town loan programs in terms of how many loans are out there and how many are in default? And if they are in default, what, what are we doing to address that?
So Clark, I'd be happy to send you the latest report and we could certainly sit down and discuss it or however you want to proceed. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's just somebody asked me and I had to answer the question. I don't know.
I'm actually very surprised personally how few defaults we have. And actually, the defaults we do have, most of them go back a couple of years or more, so.
Well, that's, that's great to hear. And that's kind of what I would like the public to hear, that we're making good decisions and the town is reaping the benefits of those good decisions you can imagine.
Yep. We, we often do update the, the taxpayers. I think the last update was probably about a year ago. But those reports are available monthly and I'm happy to provide them whoever, anybody who would like to see them. And they are, you know, I, I just looked at it the other day and there's probably two or three of them that have, that have basically declared bankruptcy and are uncollectible anyways, and we should probably write them off. And I made a mental note to, to discuss that with our attorney. But there may be a couple there that, there may be some assets we could go after, but sometimes it's more expensive to litigate than they, than, you know, if it's $10,000 and it costs you $20,000 to litigate, you'd probably skip that one.
Right. Well, as I said, I, I had to say to the person, I don't know.
Yep.
You know, I have an obligation to get an answer.
So I'll, Clark, I'll make a note to send you the latest report.
Thank you.
So on the topic of the town revolving loan fund, like we haven't talked about that enough tonight, I just want to remind this board that we reviewed the process and the policy for approving those loans in the last year or so. The, the discussion around the Energy Committee's involvement was, my understanding was simply the Energy Committee guiding people to appropriate some funding sources. So I don't want to relitigate the loan process. Thank you.
So was it clear they are not going to be actively getting loans for the Energy Committee? That's all?
I don't care who gets loans for who, as long as it reaches, as long as it meets.
I very much care.
As long as it meets the criteria that we already established.
The Energy Committee is not empowered to give loans.
The Energy Committee is advisory, not authority.
Yep. We would not be giving the Energy Committee any loans, nor would they be approving or administering.
That's all I've tried to get clarified.
Yeah. All right. And I will say, we, we mentioned the Silver Street work. I was talking with Wendy over the library the other day, and she did mention that while that work is going on, there is only one way in and out of the library. It may be that you may not be able to get in at certain periods of time. She suggests if that's something that concerns you, to call ahead. And they'll let you know if you can get in the door. And those periods of time will be very, very short, but they may be necessary due to the construction for everybody's safety.
She also said that she would post all over where she can, and she would engage Jonah's communication loudspeaker as well.
Yep. So the information will be out there, so.
So everybody should pay attention during the, that construction period and be excited about what that's going to look like.
The parking over there is going to be vastly improved.
Well, well deserved, overdue, and I'm excited about it.
All right. We do have need for an executive session to discuss personnel and contracts. Could I please have a motion to go into executive session?
It's almost.
Second?
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much, everyone. We will not be taking action.
Thank you.